I'm going to call to auto the Wednesday, March fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-one meeting of the Norfolk County Commissioners. This meeting is being held under the executive order on remote participation. On Thursday, March twelfth, two thousand and twenty, Governor Baker issued an order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. Chapter thirty A, section twenty, that auto was effective immediately until it is rescinded. All the state of emergency is terminated. I'm going to call a roll Commissioner Collins.
Joe, I'm present, but you said the week, the meeting for March fourteenth, so it's a meeting for March twenty-fourth, but yes, I'm present.
I'm sorry, I'm looking at the board, okay.
I've heard fourteen too, I thought, wait.
I didn't want to correct you, I didn't want to speak out of turn.
You can, when we get in the executive session, you can correct me, Ed, okay. Commissioner Collins, calling the roll.
Yes, present, present.
Commissioner Stady.
I am present.
And the chairman is present, we have a quorum. I need a motion for executive session, we're going into executive session for a personnel matter and we will be returning from executive session to do the full agenda today. Whatever time the executive session is over, we'll, we'll immediately go into our full agenda.
I'm going to make a motion to go in executive session in accordance with master and law chapter, section thirty A, section, from chapter thirty A, section twenty-one A, subsection one, to discuss the reputation, character, physical condition, or mental health, rather than professional competence of, of a county employee, or to discuss the discipline or dismissal of, or complaints or charges brought against such employee.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made and seconded to go into executive session under the open meeting law. For exemption number one, I'm going to call a roll Commissioner Collins.
Yes.
Commissioner Stady.
Yes.
And the chairman says, yes, it's unanimous. We are in executive session, anyone who isn't involved in this matter. Can you please leave the conference until we are back at the end of the executive session?
I'm ready.
Phil.
While we're waiting, commissioners, I'm going to go right to number four and I'm, it's going to be my intention to hopefully complete the agenda by one fifteen, which is time, it's the scheduled time for our public hearing and the budget. If we don't, we don't, we're, we're fine, but that's what I'm going to try to do here.
That's good.
Thank you.
This is sweet joining.
By the way, Joe, thank you for starting the meeting early, thank you.
No, no problem.
Appreciate it. Trying to find my material.
Thank you to the National Association of Counties for having me here today.
Hey, Bill, are we ready?
Yes.
Okay. We're back in session at our regular meeting, we're going to go to item number four, minutes of the open session meeting of March seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-one for approval.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of March seventeen.
Second.
Motion made and seconded all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, is there any public comment? At all for the meeting of, up to for today's meeting?
Mr. Chairman, we have not received by email or phone call any requests for public comment, and it's just the six of us at this time, perhaps there'll be greater comment during the budget hearing.
Okay, thank you very much. Number seven, facility maintenance capital improvement report and Corona update, coronavirus update, John McGowan.
Is not on the call at present, if, if you'd like to move on, I can reach out to his office whilst whilst you continue.
We, we absolutely will move on, but please give him a call, I, I haven't, we haven't heard, he wasn't coming, correct?
Mr. Shay through you?
Yes, Michelle.
Um, I did speak to John McGowan, he did not say he wasn't attending the meeting, but he only had one brief update, if you wanted me to update you on that.
Why don't you, in case we don't get him, but go ahead, Michelle.
So we had a COVID outbreak exposure, excuse me, exposure at district court. And so district court was not, was not open yesterday, we did cleaning the Monday night and we did clean in Tuesday as well, and they will be open tomorrow.
Which court was that, I'm sorry?
And district court.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
It was in, in the probation area, that's all I know.
Probation.
It's always the probation areas.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, he, I noticed, John did mention last week that a lot of the, the calls he does get revolver on probation, but I guess I mean, goes with the territory, they're, they're servicing people that are coming in and out all day. And I know we're taking every precaution we can, but it seems to be, not in the regular courtroom, it seems to be in probation. I don't want to put the drinks on the regular courtroom, but we're, we're handling it, and I mean, John's got it down to a science and, you know.
And as another update, John had reached out to me last week to see if there's any way we could possibly find a way to get the maintenance staff vaccinated, there's been so many different areas and courtrooms and what have you. And I have been in touch with DA Morrissey's office and he reached out to me this morning informing me that we may have a possibility to have Norfolk County employees vaccinated on Friday. He's working to get boosted ambulance to come in to the registry deeds building and he called the register as well, so we're working on that, so I just wanted to update you on that.
Okay, I'm, I'm kind of excited about that, but I don't want to put the jinx on it either, can, can we further talk about that when you give your report a little bit? Because we're still waiting, it's, it's a fluid situation. I know, they know that they've been on the horn this morning and you, you've been handling it, so I think it would be great if we can accomplish it. Even, I mean, it will open it to everyone that, that's eligible, and I believe, is everyone eligible?
Yes, everyone is eligible because we own the courthouse's and it's for court personnel.
Correct, and county employees.
Yes.
So registry, maintenance, okay.
And that's all I know for now, I'll know more this afternoon.
Okay, great, great. Number eight, appointments. Um, I have none. No appointments today. Number nine, old business. Do we have any, anything under old business that we need to discuss?
Not at this time.
Go ahead, Michelle, I'm sorry, not at this time, okay. Okay, we have four, three personnel matters, one at Wallison Recreation Facility and two, two at the Aggie School, let's take Wallison first, we have an notice of contingent employment for a seasonal ranger at thirteen fifty an hour commencing three twenty-four twenty-one, do we have a motion? This is at the golf course.
I'll move it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Second.
Second, motion made and seconded all in favor, aye, that's unanimous. Two at the Aggie, notice of resignation of a fours person and a herdsmen at fifty thousand dollars a year effective three twenty-six, that's at the agricultural high school. And a notice of an address change for an employee, a student worker at the agricultural high school. Do we have a motion on these, the first item is obviously a full-time employee.
All right, move acceptance of resignation of Rachel Tebow of Auburn.
Yeah.
As stated, effective March twenty-six twenty-one.
Second.
All in favor of the accepting the resignation of Rachel Tebow at the agricultural school, all in favor?
Aye.
And a notice of address change for student worker.
Yep, I'll move, I guess, acceptance of the notice of address change for Scott Schofield, as noted effective three sixteen twenty-one.
Second.
Payroll and expense warrants for approval.
Let's see.
Got a payroll and expense warrant.
All right, if you want to take a lead here, motion to approve the following, Mr. Chairman, for May, March twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-one, county weekly payroll twenty-one dash thirty-eight in amount of one hundred and sixty thousand, nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars, sixty-three cents, so moved.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Next.
Second motion, Aggie payroll twenty-one dash thirty-eight in the amount of three hundred and thirty thousand, eight hundred and seventy-two dollars and three cents.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Third motion, Aggie payroll twenty-one dash three eight, nineteen point one, not sure exactly what that is, but in the amount of thirteen thousand, four hundred and fifty-five dollars, forty-nine cents, must be additional payroll.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
Bond issue twenty-one dash five, in the amount of sixty-two thousand, six hundred and forty dollars, sixty-three cents.
Second.
Motion made and seconded all in favor, aye, unanimous.
County expense warrant of March four twenty-one in the amount of four hundred and ninety-two thousand, sixty-five dollars and forty-three cents, so moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded all in favor, aye, unanimous.
And finally, the Aggie expense warrant of twenty-one dash oh nine in the amount of thirty-eight thousand, six hundred and thirty-three dollars and twenty-seven cents, so moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor, aye, unanimous. That concludes the payroll and expense warrants for this week's meeting. Number twelve, bid openings, I have none, number thirteen, contract awards, I have none. Number fourteen, report on American Rescue.
Just, weren't we supposed to award the contract on the paint, I keep getting mixed up on that, the paint for the courthouse? Or is that next week?
I'm in, I believe it's April seventh, Commissioner.
Okay, okay, thank you, thank you.
Good, we'll get our gold on April seventh.
All right, I like that, all right, good, good.
Um, number fourteen, report on American Rescue Plan Act of two thousand and twenty-one. Assistant Director Buckley.
Mr. Chairman, through you, I hope you're all well, I continue. I, I guess the watchword for the work we've been doing is, is I don't know what the watchword would be, we, we basically, we have begun to nip around the edges to try to really get into the hard in fact, and the stringent guardrails of what we're being asked to do. So, over the past weekend, working with Commissioner Collins, who's, who's also, you know, the commissioner running point on this. We've done a number of things, one was, we, we did again reconnect to our National Association. And I do have, just today, too early, too late to be said to you. We do have a letter, which I, I see we have a little bit of time, so I will screen share and, and just go over it briefly, because I think it's warranted from our National Association, as I indicated last week. Naco had asked to gather questions from the constituent counties across the country that they could give to the treasury, and so this is the document that, that was produced. And to, to kind of skip the, the pleasantries at the bottom. Basically, Naco has asked for us the, the central questions, clarification over capital investment projects, and I will send this right after the meeting to you as it just came to me, lost revenue and governmental budget cycles, I would highlight they're seeking clarity on the definition of revenue. Since counties receive general tax revenue, we do not. User fees, federal and state grants, intergovernmental revenue transfers, I would, I would argue that that would be our assessment. Lawsuit settlements and other sources of income, so they're seeking a, a great amount of clarification of, of what that revenue is. And B, provide more details how counties will determine their baseline financial year to determine their eligible revenue reduction, obviously. Deeds receipts did well, given, you know, the, the state of the housing market, but I think this, this will be a, a key piece to follow a, as we, as we move forward, obviously, we're not really involved with, with broad, broadband or, or aid industries. But another thing was, I think of new, to assist counties and distributing tracking and reporting recovery fund dollars to the Treasury, counties request clarification on whether recovery funds can be used to hire and cover payroll costs for administrators as well as to use trans, Treasury funds for audit compliance. So, this is, this is a huge clarification, as we talked about before, when, even though it was set up differently during the CARES Act, when Plymouth County took CARES Act Fund, they obviously hired additional staff, there was a, a staff in the treasurer's office now who sole purpose, in, in the Plymouth County treasurer's office, the sole purpose of chasing these funds. I was also able to talk to, just yesterday, AJ Kabillion, who's the federal fund manager for the city of Quincy. And likewise, his sole purpose is, is to run point on federal fund distribution. So, Naco is asking for a greater clarity around that. And, and I think to that point as well, if I go down a little. And I think this is the, the, something that is, as the question of reporting in the, how onerous that will be for Norfolk County in particular, and all of our county neighbors in Massachusetts, I think this, this piece, this question really hits the nail on the head. Is the request from the National Association to create a centralized office of recovery fund best practices and stakeholder engagement to really ensure that we're not, as we have been thus far, calling our federal partners, calling our state partners. We want to make sure that, that all of these guidelines come from one place and in, in sort of doing a deep dive. County government, I think, is all government is relational, and so I was also able to, with Commissioner Shay shoot into the Quincy City Hall yesterday and speak with his chief financial officer, Eric J. Mason. And, and he and I were strategizing about how to really coalesce, coalesce more information for the commissioners and our constituent counties, we were talking about, we were literally working on laptops, looking at, maybe there's, there's a few kind of crumbs of information from the, the South Carolina County Association had, had some like attributed comments that said, well, we think this is what the, the distribution is going to be like, so we're literally on a detective mission in some ways to find out, what is MMA saying? What, what, what is our national group saying, what else can we hear, is there any interviews or, or kind of card tipping, tea re, tea leaf reading, and so obviously, that's not the best use of anyone's time. And so I think this, this request from Naco to make sure there's a really streamlined process is good, and they also, just as importantly, you know, A, provide timely recovery fund reporting requirement guidance months after the CARES Act was established, US Treasury Inspector General released guidance on requirements for the CARES Act. The, we, we cannot have that type of delay, and so it, it's good to know that, you know, we join our National Association in, in advocating for a quick distribution of the guidance. And, and, and finally, you know, I think the third point, which is really important, is to avoid really burdensome recovery fund reporting requirements, in my discussions with both the city of Quincy and Plymouth County. And even Nancy Rockwell, our purchasing agent, who has worked with our CARES Act reimbursement in, in a very, in a small way, a small dollar number. The, the reporting requirements are burdensome and, and are, are difficult, and I, I think it's it's heartening to see that we are all together advocating to make sure that we make this process as easy as possible and we don't waste time, treasure, and resources and bandwidth on kind of chasing information that could otherwise be more readily shared, so, so those were the those were the, the two conversations with the city of Quincy I had that was, was positive. We continue to, we have kind of gotten everybody on the same page, we're hoping next week as a staff to talk about about the, which, how each individual county will be pursuing the American Federal Recovery Act funds, again, everyone is basically in a wait-and-see footing, there was a call yesterday which we tried to kind of listen in on with some of the CFOs of the various communities over fifty thousand with administration and finance, and while we were not able to hop on, and it was not a county call. Counties did come up a couple of times, and some of our friends on the call from various municipalities did reach out to us and explain that the latest from A and F, because that, the county money question did come up, said, we, we really still do not have the information we need to even give speculatory advice. And, and, and so A and F is saying in the next few weeks, you know, hopefully, the, the term mid-April is now emerging kind of around April vacation time, they, they hope they will have further guidance. So we, we continue to amass lists of questions, I've, I've requested a call with the federal intergovernmental affairs, so, team at the Association of Counties to, to really lay before them all of our specific concerns, I, I think I've been going to try to do that with the other counties as well, just we can all get in the room. And maybe, you know, Commissioner Collins can join me or another commissioner as well. Just to make sure the uniqueness of Massachusetts and New England counties is represented, and I think that we're doing an okay job in advocating, but I think in this interim period, we just need to find ways to continue to make those touches and continue to raise those questions until we get the full answers, but I was heartened this week by what our National Association is asking of the federal government, I think that will make it whichever way we choose to go, as we try to gather all the information to see what, what options are available to us, I think those, those requests will make it a lot easier, whichever way we decide, but that's it now, but that's a long answer for no real
Plenty of time.
But we've got plenty of time. And if anybody has any questions, Commissioner Stady, I can, I can circle back with you on the veterans question and, and the school question, I did a great conversation right after the meeting with, with Dale, and, and he's hearing you know, that, that one hundred and thirty-seven million is one bucket, but the, the veterans money is in a ti, entirely different title. And his feeling is, and, and the explanation he's, he's getting from the state offices, that the state Veterans Office of Veterans Affairs will be in charge of dispersment for the veterans funding, so that wouldn't come out of our one thirty-seven piece, or it wouldn't play into that. And likewise, that the education money, Dr. Quinn is kind of working through her association trying to get as much information as possible, the Aggie does get what's called Asher money, which was part of the CARES Act. And that's, that's, that is a lot, I believe it's part of the CARES Act. But that, that has kind of spoken to a number of the, the reopening concerns, but obviously, as every, you know, as you three commissioners who are also school committee members, myself, we're all thinking about September reopening, and, and there's a dollar, there's a price tag associated with that, so we're, we're hoping that there will be an additional pool of money that, that can be utilized, so we're again looking for strictures and guidance on how, how that will be distributed, but there's also state money that was approved in this, this year's budget, that's going directly to the Aggie and all other schools in the Commonwealth to, to address this as well, so it's it's, it's not particularly streamlined, there's, there's so many different kind of
It's not, you know, if I, if I may, Mr. Chairman, we're going, we're going in circles, I get a little tired of circle talk. I mean, I appreciate Bill's effort, I really do, this is not on you, it's not on you, I think.
Oh, no, I know.
No, just listen, I, I, I had a chance to speak to a congressman first hand over the weekend, all right, and the congressman was telling me it's our money, and he gave me a couple ideas how to spend it, and it was something I wasn't even thinking of, and I don't want to cloud the issue. But he was like, well, you should be doing this and this and this with it, the assumption is, it's your money. So, here are people who are signing this bill in Washington, not a guy in Quincy or Canton or Milton, a guy in Washington signed the bill saying, no, 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 this is your money. Now go do something with it, and I'm like, okay, but what do we do, how do we spend it? And, and no one seems to know, no one seems, no, I don't get an answer, and I've, I've contacted his office, well, you'll figure it out, it's like, you're going to weave your way through the darkness here. And every week, it's the same story, I would go back to the chairman's suggestion, I think, yeah, before we do anything, of course, we want to have clear-cut understanding of how we go about it, no question. Second, I totally endorse, and the money's there to do it, get, make sure we have like a law firm, a CPA, an auditing group to oversee all of it, we don't want to be burdening Michelle or you, Bill, or anybody else, it's not fair. Have a separate entity, if you will, created for the dispersment. But I urge us, please, to really think beyond what we're even thinking right now, because the ideas I had were from this congressman were unbelievable. He's like, look at it water infrastructure, help your towns that way, and look at broadband, he said, look at broadband, look at your schools as far as opening again and helping your schools with summer, all the things I talked about, mentioned. He said, if you have veteran agents, look there, he, he gave a number of things you can look at, so it sounds like it's the golden egg, but no one knows how to, you know, crack it open at the moment, right, you know what I mean, we're all trying, I appreciate it, hopefully, little by little, we'll get there, but it's sort of like, from what I'm hearing from you. And when I read it, and when I'm talking to others with all due respect, it's sort of like a mutual thing, yeah, we should definitely look at the county, and how can we help our county as a government entity move forward, whether it's capital projects or other ways, let's do it, but then at the same time, partner up, there's a great opportunity here to partner up with towns, and even what he mentioned, organizations in the county, and help them out, it'd be a conduit to help them, so I'm waiting to hear when these rules finally come down, I think that was great, I'd love to, if you could send that letter, you
I'll send it, and, and you're quite correct, through you, Mr. Chairman, it's, it's going to be like ten minutes, and you know that, right? It's all gonna, that we'll get the email, and it's, here's the ten thousand page guidance. And it's going to be right, and, and everyone's going to be like, oh my God, we're all going to be on a weekend flipping through pages, because that's how government does literally everything. And, oh, yes, so it's, we should, it should be good, but I will continue to send documents your way throughout the week as they kind of come across my desk and things of interest, so.
The one thing I'll just add though, if he did stress, he goes, this is not the CARES Act, so don't look at it, CARES Act.
Exactly.
I think, I think we're all in agreement, I think that it's a little different kind of money, it's a different part, if you will, right? And it has to be handled differently, and I guess the main thing is, how do we disperse it, how do we oversee it? And then again, how do we again benefit the county and our constituents, that's the, that's the goal, you know, so.
Absolutely, and hopefully, we can do it in a better way than the CARES Act, and some of the things we've learned about CARES Act distribution and pitfalls, we can kind of move beyond.
Have we had conversations with Plymouth in terms of actually what they went, oh, I guess we did, we went out and got this. Okay, that's good, so what's, what is Bristol County doing, do we know what they're doing?
They're waiting to see what we're doing.
Okay.
So, I, I talk with Maria every couple of days, and we're just, we're in the same exact, and the little counties too. Um, yeah, that we hope to someday after we get a vaccine, be able to go visit.
Saying, he was very, he ran on point, he goes, the counties that were dissolved, this money went pass straight through, it did pass through, so I could see where perhaps I remember you said some of those city managers and town administrators were calling you, saying, where's the money? I could see what they were thinking, because they may have heard that, but we're not certainly dissolved, we're an active county, and as I said, I, we have to look at it that way, so, thank you.
Totally.
I don't want to belabor it, but plug in, keep us posted, thank you.
Good stuff.
Hey. I there isn't a day goes by that we don't do a little work on this, and today, I did reach out again to A and F to the folks that we dealt with before, who asked us originally contacted Director Mullin and asked us not to take the first batch, now I know this is different. But we only can go to who we work with, and, and Peter knows more about this than I do, and it evolved in a manner that Plymouth Bristol and Norfolk did what the state recommended and Plymouth did not, and I've heard, we of course have a closeness with Plymouth County, and I've heard, you know, that it was somewhat successful, I have even heard that they were very happy with the three entities that they hired to help them, one being an attorney, attorney's firm a big one, one being a local South Shore CPA, and then in an auditor. They even don't know what's going to happen on the second batch. For those who are calling what I try to say off the record is, until we hear, it's very difficult to make, make a decision or to sit, make any promises, I feel I feel they're going to be busy for the first initiation of their spending their first batch of money because they're getting second, they're getting an earmarked amount of money all the way from eight hundred fifty thousand for Avon up to Quincy's forty-six or seven million dollars. I think that's exciting. If, if we end up being the pass-through agent to get this to the cities and towns, so be it. But what A and F says to us is going to make, is going to have a big effect on what happens. Now, we don't answer to A and F, but you know, they've been down the road on this and clearly they're they're going back and forth about it too. When I say A and F, it's the Commonwealth. That's the vehicle they used before to do it. So I'm waiting for my phone to ring. I did talk to them this morning. I don't think it's going to ring today. Based on what the cities and towns were told yesterday, I, I, I think there's still some, we're in the formative stages, but I get very nervous about making any concrete statements until we know what our options are. I really feel we're not equipped to handle it. Under the present conditions in this office, because it's enormous, I've had some conversations with this county treasurer about it, but you know, could we gear up? Yes, I think we can. But every week I hope to finalize this and, and, and be able for us to, to know which way we're going to go. But we don't have it today. So I don't know any, if there's any other comments, we've got plenty of time here. We've got three other subjects before we go to our public hearing on the budget. So if there's no other comments about the the American Rescue Plan, I'm trying to use its right title. It's called the American Rescue Plan. I'd like to move on to a matter at Central Street in Stoughton. Are you going to handle that?
I will, sir.
Is the, is there, there's a there's a letter in here from Attorney Lopez.
Yes, I'm trying to actually bring it up on Google Maps for you.
Okay, go ahead. This is a matter in Stoughton for the engineering department. Go ahead. So on the agenda under it number fifteen.
Excellent. So here's, if you can see, minimize this for you. This is the Richard L. Wilkins Elementary School on Central Street in Stone, Stoughton, on the way to, on the road to the town spot. And this is our parcel, Stoughton District Court. The town of Stoughton is engaged in a Safe Streets Grant process, which is an awesome state program where it basically makes one of the central function is to make the route to school safer for young children, especially with the folks in elementary schools. So Central Street here in Stoughton, I can kind of zoom out and get people a better idea of this is downtown. This is Cops Corners, that way, Palillo's. The, there are portions of this area where the, there is no sidewalk or the sidewalk is deteriorated and they are rehabilitating that. In order to do so, we are obvious, the, the thrust of the project is to make it safer to get to the Richard L. Wilkins Elementary School. And we are the next door neighbor of the elementary school. So there are some grants of easements that need to be taken in order to move forward this project. I can bring that up here. Probably, let me just find the, the better. The, the project has, has reached and completed a one hundred percent design. Here is the, the Wilkins School. Here is the, the county's parcel. And they need to take a few small parcels here, seen in green. Attorney Lopez looked at it. The previous county surveyor looked at it extensively before he retired. They see no problem with Attorney Lopez that we could conceivably ask the town of Stoughton to pay us for these tiny parcels, which I would not recommend, but he just felt it was part of due diligence. And this is really one of the last pieces for, to allow the town to proceed. And we just need a, a grant of easement on the commissions, which is the recommendation of Attorney Lopez as well. Questions, I can, I can toggle back and forth.
What, what is, what is the next step here?
You would, if the commissioners so chose, they could designate Chairman Shay to sign that grant of easement on their behalf. And then we would send that to the town and they can proceed and finalize the, the project and move forward. I think they're, they're looking at the, the spring construction timetable. So that is all, that's the only thing else that we would need to do as a county.
Okay. Commissioners, do you have any questions about this matter in Stoughton?
No, I think it it looks straightforward and it's a good project. I think we have to all sign that though, Bill. The estimate requires the signature of all county commissioners.
Okay.
It's just designated.
Yeah, it, it calls for three signatures. I, I, I'm looking at the draft. I think.
I just don't have that.
I do. I have that in front of me. Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. I could make a motion.
Objection. If there's no objection, I'd like to have the meets and bounds put in here. The draft does not contain it. And that is plant, plant numbers accepted. And I believe it's ready to go. Now, I know we're, you know, we're you know, we're, we're a little, a little behind in the engineering department, but anything we can do to, to, to go to the next level, I think we should. So if we can get the final grant of easement for next week's meeting, let's get going and, and Bill'll sign it and go to the next level. Of course, we support it. Of course, it's ready to go. So anything we can do.
Through, and I would, I would defer to the commissioners, but I, I believe you, you could, you could vote to sign it at this meeting and we could, we could insert the meats and bounds and then get your signatures. That's, so I think we need to, do we have to come back for another, another week?
Well, that's a good question. Our attorney says, thank you. I looked this over. It looks fine. Doesn't look like it will interfere with the courthouse activities once construction is completed. It would be nice to get a little more money for the land. We are giving them a perpetual easement. But that's the commissioner's call. I don't know that we have a raft of the town of Stoughton for any money for this easement. I don't, I don't have a generally always do them. We have a history of doing them for a dollar. So.
Yeah, the Stoughton Select wouldn't be too happy.
If, 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 if the commissioners agree, yeah, we can take the vote now. And as soon as we get the paperwork, we'll, we'll drive it around and get it signed by the three of us.
That's no problem. And, and as a point of information, we did in discussion with the, the community, there, there will be no interruption of access to the court. While the, the construction's going on, they're making sure that, you know, they're not blocking driveways or anything like that. There will, there will be public access uninterrupted to Stoughton District Court.
No, and I'm sure they, they take care of the detail, et cetera, everything like that.
Bill, do you know, Mr. Chairman?
Forward, I, I, now that we have, you know, it from, from Attorney Lopez.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, who would fill in the, since we don't have an engineer, who would be responsible though for filling in the exact, you know, it says plan XXXX. You got to have something in there to make it valid. Who would be responsible for that?
We would ask the, the, the town of Stoughton's engineering department, which they're working with to, to fill, fill that in. And then we can get, we can run around and get those, that signed.
Okay. So would you want to vote then, Mr. Chairman, to grant an easement from the Norfolk County Commissioners and County of Norfolk to Stoughton as described on the document labeled and provided this date and is outlined with the stipulation that prior to final execution, the plans are all properly identified?
Correct. And I noticed in, in our packet, there's a note here from our project manager, Mike Jordan, that he spoke to Mark Tisdale, who is the Stoughton engineer, says here yesterday, so that, that's dated March tenth. So that's good. Regarding the, the whole project, the proposed easement, and it says anything that has to be done, that they'll, they'll get it done with Mark.
Oh, excellent.
So I think we're ready to go.
Yeah, I know they've been in communication constantly in the last couple of weeks.
Sure, if we can get it off our agenda and get, get it going, let's get it going. Any other questions, Commissioner Collins?
Wrong set.
Motion made and seconded to forward the grant of easement for final passage by this board based on this vote and signed by the three commissioners to allow the safe safe routes to school project on Central Street in the town of Stoughton. All in favor? Thank you. Okay. Moving right along, our goal is to get to one fifteen, which we're going to. We have the report of the county director. Michelle, please.
Expect me to talk that long.
Acting director.
Very solid, Michelle.
Good afternoon, everyone. The commissioner's public hearing was posted in accordance with open reading law. We are nearing the end of the budget process for the FY twenty-two budget proposal. Our role is to present the balanced budget to the Norfolk County Advisory Board and the Norfolk County Advisory Board Finance Committee in the coming weeks. The commissioner's office is still working to address the negative variance in the budget. Budget, the county budget was checked line by line this week and updates have been made. We are currently at a fifty-six thousand, one hundred ninety-five variance. As you know, we separated the capital spending from the operating budget this year. The budget hearing with the advisory board is scheduled for April seventh. And the advisory board public hearing is scheduled for April fourteenth. Upon reviewing the variance, I would like to make some changes in what we have in the budget currently. By removing one group family insurance and by removing one individual plan. And as I check longevity amounts, they are a little elevated compared to what we would need for longevity payments in this fiscal year. With those things changed and possibly few other changes, we could actually balance the budget. So that's what I'm looking at this week. I am reviewing it very closely. I would welcome any suggestions that you may have. But that's where we are with the budget. So I wanted to update everyone on that. We've received revenues update for February and I'm going to share my screen as we review this. Okay, so as you noticed, these are the February online revenues. And when you take that amount and you divide it by eight months, that's where we are in this fiscal year. You get.
Are you sharing the screen there? We don't see anything. See you. We don't see the shit, what you're sharing.
Screen?
I'm not seeing it.
We see you.
Okay, let me try that again.
I know.
See you, Bill.
Hold on, hold on, please.
All right.
You see it now?
Yes.
Yes.
Sorry about that.
There we go. Yep.
Yes, yes, thank you.
You're welcome. So I thought it would be easier to show this as I'm explaining it. So as you can see right here where my cursor is, that's the February amount and it's nine thousand two hundred and sixty-five. When you take that amount and divided by the eight months in the year, you get a monthly average of twelve thousand, one hundred and fifty-eight. So if you take that amount and divided by twelve months, the total comes out to a hundred and forty-six thousand. However, the amount here is a hundred eighty thousand. So it's off by thirty-four thousand. So I wanted to bring that to your attention. And perhaps a relocation of the registry computer access fund revenues from fifty percent to a hundred percent based on our budgetary and revenue needs would be in order. So that's just something I wanted to bring up in case we wanted to look at that. Does anyone have any questions about that?
How does this compare to last year at this time?
It's right here, Commissioner. So if you look at
Okay, I see it.
Yep, you just go right across the line. And you have two thousand nineteen too. Okay, so you can, you can see, you can clearly see the difference.
And you think this is based upon?
I, I don't understand why it's lower. So we, we projected a hundred eighty thousand. And if this keeps trending the way it's trending, we're not, we're only going to get to a hundred and thirty-four thousand.
And that doesn't make any sense, Michelle, because we're looking at Plymouth and Bristol and their, their numbers are going up. Our numbers is dropping down. It doesn't make any sense.
It doesn't make any sense. And I know previous Director Mullin has asked the registrar of deeds for an explanation of this. And I don't believe he has an explanation. He has not received an explanation to date on what is happening.
Right. He's, he said that Rich Kennedy was responsible for it and then Rich retired. So we don't have an answer.
That what he said? Oh, okay. But we don't have an answer to this. So I think we need one.
We need one for the finance committee?
Yes.
Not just for us, but for the finance committee. It doesn't make any sense.
I agree. I agree. But I wanted to point that out to all of you. Okay, moving on.
You're projecting on that a shortfall of about forty thousand dollars?
Correct.
Right? Okay. Okay.
Yep.
All right. Want to make sure I get that clear. All right.
But with this giving year and COVID, a lot of the other registries are trending the opposite direction. So that's why I wanted to bring it to your attention. Okay, moving on, the Abraham's Group is ready to roll out their five-year capital plan for fiscal year twenty-two and the capital budget. And we'd like to brief you on this next week. So I just wanted to make sure that we're going to put them on the agenda for about thirty minutes. They said the presentation would only take a couple of minutes, then questions and answers.
Okay.
All right.
I don't see any reason. Commissioners, we'll, we'll have the Abrams Group on to talk about capital. I think, I think before we sign the, you know, send the budget to the to the advisory board, we should, we should have them in anyway. So which is coming to shove, although we're, we're on, we're on course here. And based on today, then you have a working session tomorrow evening. So we'll, we'll make our deadline, even if we have to make the decisions, which in the end we have to make anyway. So.
Engineering lands of a position is posted on Indeed. With Joe, Joe Mickel's payout, this person wouldn't be able to start until the end of May. So the timeline's going to work perfect, I hope. And I already updated you on DA Marcy with the boost of ambulance. More to come on that. I'll, I'll know more about that later in the day. I don't have anything more to report on that. And that is my update.
If we are fortunate enough to get some some vaccination, some vaccine or vaccinations for our employees, is this open to other people or spouses or anyone else? Because that's the first question you're going to get.
No, I believe it's only open to our employees because it's for the court. So it would be.
It's, it's it's for court personnel and extending it to our employees, hopefully.
Personnel.
Okay, personnel. So that's maintenance, registry, this office, whatever.
Correct.
Okay. I think.
Have been informed and they're getting back to me with their numbers.
That's good.
What about, what about Wallaston? Would they be included?
The golf course?
Yeah.
I could reach out to them as well.
I don't see why not. I mean, it's a stretch a little, but I mean, anything we can do if, you know.
Right. Yeah, reach out to them. Any other questions?
Yeah, we did have a question from Robert about whether it's extended to our, our RSVP drivers, the people that drive the vets. He had a caller too. I would say absolutely, if we could. Someone's going to have to do, Robert will have to do a little digging.
I, I'd have to look into that. I'm not sure.
Yeah, it might have to go to employees first, Joe.
Yeah, I don't think, yeah.
Okay, well, if you, if they're looking for more people.
If they're looking for more people.
Look there. I'll, I'll talk to Robert about how many drivers, et cetera, but don't make a promise until you know, because it's still up in the air, but I think it's very.
This was offered to Norfolk County employees. So.
Very positive thing.
Careful about that.
Well, that's why I, I ask about husbands of wives and children, because we had a little experience in this and people, people, people want to extend it because people are waiting and, you know, and I understand it.
I agree.
You know, but if we're only getting two hundred shots, that's, it's over at the two, after the two hundred. Does this include the agricultural school? And that's my last question.
I did not include the agricultural school because they can't get here at, at the time because they're educators and they're teaching and so I did not extend it. He really basically said for this area, so I, I, I just did what he asked.
Michelle, can you close that screen?
Is already, haven't they already been approved to get the shot, school personnel?
There we go.
I believe they have, certainly the teachers have, but you know, we have other people that, but I, if it's not for the school, that's fine. I mean, if we can't reach them. I'm, I'm, here I'm, here I'm answering my own question. Um, Commissioner Stady.
Oh, can she close that screen off? I'm trying to, I can't get my other material. It's, I can't, uh, close it. Does she have screen? Thank you. I think I was looking at, well, there's something else there.
We have your family screenshot there, Michelle.
All right. It's a nice family.
So how, I don't know how to, I'm sorry, I don't know how to end that.
Michelle, at the very top of your screen, it should say end screen share.
It doesn't. It says new share. I already. There we go.
There you go.
It was quite red and said stop share and I skipped right over it.
Okay, anything else for Michelle under the record of the county director?
Where do we stand on the, uh, search for the new county director? Where are we at there?
Oh, I wanted to update you that. Great question.
Thank you.
I did talk to Bernie Lynch and he said he currently had, um, four candidates, but he's expecting two more and that the posting position concludes on April eighth, so he's, he's expecting, um, more candidates.
Wow, okay. Moving along, good. Very good.
Okay. Last item. We need to chew up ten minutes before we start our public hearing, but we're, we're right on time on this. Anything, any topic that we did not reasonably anticipate. I'm open to ten minutes of discussion, old or new. Because we're on for one fifteen for public hearing on the budget, but we're now one oh, one oh six.
I could probably fill that in for you.
Oh, it is a voice.
There he is.
There he is. We're, we're going to go back.
I didn't realize the meeting was at eleven thirty. I thought it was at our regular time.
Oh, we, we had a, we had a maintenance issue at eleven thirty on executive session, but we'll, uh, we'll brief you later on that. I'm going to move back now.
All right, I, I don't have, uh, any, anything under capital improvement, commissioners, uh, but once again, uh, we had a problem at district court and, uh, somebody from probation. I know it sounds like I just repeating myself, but we shut it down Thursday and we cleaned it all up and disinfected everything and and, uh, we got a call Monday from Judge Palmerall. Somebody else come down with it Fri- I guess was in the building Friday. And, uh, when they opened up, they closed Thursday and then when they opened up Friday, somebody else come down with it. So, uh, John, night, uh, night supervisor, we did it, cleaned it and disinfected everything, and then I did it again yesterday. He closed the court yesterday, so we, uh, did it all over again and, uh, they're opened up today. But it's just, uh, I, I don't know, it was somebody in probation, probably was with this other person that was in probation and didn't get the results of their test until probably over the weekend. I'm not sure. But I just wanted to let you know that we took care of it anyway. And, uh, any questions I can answer, I, I will.
John, are you aware that Michelle is in contact with uh, actually through the DA's office about getting shots for our employees? It's going to happen Friday if it's going to happen, so.
Yes, I, uh.
Being Wednesday, we gotta stay right on top of it, but we haven't.
I was in contact with Mike. He, Mike, the district attorney called me, uh, quite a while ago and, uh, we were discussing it for the last couple of weeks, but I, I have a list out for the guys to, uh, sign up for it. So far, I think I have nine or ten, something like that, and, uh, I'm going to wait until tomorrow, uh, I'll give the guys another chance to think it over. Some, some guys aren't getting it, and some guys already have got one shot. And, uh, they can't sign up for this, so they have to go back to wherever they got the shots.
Correct.
So, but we're on top of it and, uh, you know, it's good to thank the DA for, you know, hopefully he comes through with this for us. It'd be good.
Any other questions for John while we have him captured, commissioners?
Where's that potential vaccine going to take place? Do we know how they said it yet?
Yeah, grand jury room upstairs with the, the old, uh, jury room and the registry of deeds.
Okay.
Uh, that's what I was told, uh, a- and that'd be ideal for it because you got all the seating, because when, you know, as you know, when you get the shot, you have to sit down for twenty minutes, uh, and, uh, till you can leave and, uh, we have the room up there for that and it should go smoothly, uh. You know, I'm sure that they'll be prepared for it and if they need any assistance, I'll, I'll be more than happy to help them out.
Mr. Chairman, through you, if I may.
Yes.
Uh, two quick questions or take, you, we got five more minutes, but any updates on Stoughton uh, that you want to give us and any updates on Rhythm that we happen to see? Any, is it all?
Well, I, I, I don't, didn't want to give you the update on Stoughton because it's not very good news. I, I heard that, uh, the contractor can't get a hold of the equipment for at least ten weeks.
Ah, geez.
And, uh, that seems like a long time to me. I mean, I thought one of the conditions was that we get these things right off the shelf. So, you know, if they get the exact same, you know, the duplicate, I, I don't see why it'd take that long, but that's what I was told by, uh, Nancy before she left.
Yeah, maybe when Nancy comes back, we'll talk to her then.
Yeah, maybe, uh, because I know we, we did tell everybody, I, I told, uh, Chris McQuaid that we, that you guys put it on the, uh, fast mode. We want it done real quick. And, uh, that was one of the reasons that we pushed this thing along, was to get it done before season, you know, gets in the swing here, but with the air conditioning and everything else. But hopefully, uh, you know, they, they probably might be just saying that to give themselves a leeway and who knows, they might have another job they're finishing up. You know, they do lie, you know, everybody lies.
Oh, really? Okay.
Yes, they do.
Shocking.
Especially contractors. But on Rhythm, uh, I, I don't, I don't, uh, what are you, are you referring to, uh, Mr. Commissioner?
Yeah, I, I think there were a couple of enjoy, I think you said they were attended to, but I don't know if there's anything else that the clerk magistrate had pointed out and we visited. I, I think that's also that, right, the roof, the probation area, there was, um, you know.
Oh, yeah, we, we straightened that out. That's, that's completed and, uh, I, I reached out to her about, you know, what we were talking to her about in the main courtroom. And, uh, she said she'd rather, you know, want to put it off and, and until things are a little calmed down, you know, with all the other stuff that we have going on. Uh, she, Michelle, she's very nice and, uh, she said she's well, you know, she doesn't want to rush on it. That was, uh, I think it was the, uh, witness stand and, uh, the clerk's bench, right?
That's correct, yep.
Yeah, and, uh, I, I'm still in the process of looking for a millwer- a mill worker that, uh, a mill company that, uh, because that's a specialty item. It's too big for Joe to take care of. I mean, that's something they have to rip out all those benches, that whole area there and, and, uh, they, usually what they do is make it in their shop. Uh, you know, they'll make it in their warehouse or shop and they'll come out and get all the measurements and they come in and boom, they take that one out, dismantle that and put the new one in. That's the way they should do it, uh, rather than trying to build it in place. They usually make them, they're already prefabbed in their, uh, shop. And there is one out, uh, there's one out near Millis, I believe, out that area. There's a few of them around that I'm still looking at, but I, I will let you know as soon as I, you know, get it, get somebody together to do it. They still have, probably go out the bit anyway, but uh, that's a specialty thing, you know, to make that.
Hey, thank you, John. Thank you.
All right.
Chairman, through you?
Go ahead.
Uh, Commissioner Shay, I just want to, I mean, Commissioner Stady, I just want to respond to your question about vaccinations. Uh, the plan for the vaccinations would be the grand jury room like John explained, but the conference room down the end of the hall is where the shots will be given. And then the people would walk down the hallway to the grand jury room, sit in a chair for twenty minutes before they exited the registry of deeds.
Okay, very good. Very good. Thank you.
Okay, last call. Anything else for John? Okay, I have one fourteen. We're going to wait one more minute and then go into a public hearing for our two thousand and twenty-two budget. Anybody can ask any questions they want about the budget. It's, it's a working document. Okay. Thank you, John.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you, John. Thank you. Be in touch.
Bye, John. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have reached one fifteen and, uh, according to today's agenda on item number six is a public hearing on the fiscal year twenty twenty-two Norfolk County budget to be held at one fifteen. I'm now going to open the uh, public hearing for anyone that has any questions relative to our budget, which I believe has been available in draft form. Is it on? It's on our website, correct, Michelle?
Yes, Commissioner, the draft budget is on the website.
Uh, so I'm opening up now who, anybody from the public or anyone at all, but if, I'd like to start with the public. If there's anyone waiting or has been waiting and has any questions, and then we'll go to staff or anyone else who has any comments. Do I hear any comments? Okay, well. I hope the acceptance of the budget goes as smoothly. Because we're still wor- this still is a working document. I mentioned there's a, oh, Michelle has a session coming up later tomorrow, uh, on the, on the budget. And then we'll hopefully present, uh, a package next week, which is what we're going to run with and accept and send, uh, forward to our advisory board in the time schedule that we have published earlier in the year. Is there any other comments about the budget in any way, shape or form from anyone? I'm going to ask three times and then we're going to ask for an adjournment here. I know that, again, Michelle's doing a great job on this. Things are always changing, people retiring, new people. We're not hiring extra people, but we, we, we still, uh, thank God, replacing people that retire. And, uh, that has some, some, some effect on the budget because some of our retirees, uh, recently are lots of, in Richard, Richard, Richard Kennedy's case had thirty-five years, so you know, that has a, that has an effect. And a lot of other people that are gone also has an effect, not only in longevity. Some people start at a different rate, usually lower. Not all, but a lot of do, a lot of people do, so. Michelle has actually been individually going over every employee and, uh, checking their, their, all that they're eligible for, checking all that they pay, et cetera, so it's, uh, it, 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 it's given us a little leeway here and it's pretty, uh, it's a, it's pretty, pretty, pretty overdue, but I, now the fact that she's done it is, will help us in the long run in coming up with a final figure. But there's a few other decisions that we're going to have to make by next week and I will bring them up in next week's meeting. One is in maintenance. Couple are at the registry. Uh, we're still, uh, working on the engineering department, but as Michelle said earlier, um, with the retirement of, of Joe McNichols and the payout, uh, we're constricted there and what we can do because the department is so small, they don't have any breakage or any extra money. Where other departments do, but not, not. Okay.
What's, uh, what's our schedule, Mr. Chairman, uh, if I may, in terms of when we make our determination ourselves? That's up in April, I would assume, or?
Well, if, uh, you, you have a draft.
Yeah.
I, it's going to change by next week, but it's going to change very minimally and, and Michelle will list them all out at that time.
Okay.
And then if you're, if you're ready, if not, we can go the following week and then we'll forward it to, uh, to the, to the board. Michelle, to the advisory board. What is the date we're sent it to the advisory board? I know you said it earlier. I haven't got it written down. It's on my calendar though.
Certainly. So, so to answer your question, Commissioner, uh, Stady.
Yeah.
On March thirty-first, the commissioners vote on the FY22 budget with the finance committee meeting. On April seventh is the finance committee meeting and April fourteenth, the advisory board public hearing. May twelfth is the finance committee meeting and then May nineteenth is the advisory board meeting and vote for the FY22 budget proposal. I can certainly send you the schedule if you need it.
Nope, I think I have that buried in the desktop somewhere.
I had it too. I just didn't have it in front of me.
Yeah, it's getting crowded. I think you did send that. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so it's next week, Joe, Chairman. Okay.
Last call.
All right.
For anyone who's on this public meeting of the Norfolk County Commissioners, our regularly scheduled meeting. We're at item number six, which is any comments on the twenty twenty-two uh, draft budget, which is before us. Last call on the budget. Okay, commissioners, I'm going to entertain a motion to adjourn the regularly scheduled meeting of March twenty-four, uh, May twenty, uh, March twenty-four, twenty twenty. I'm thinking of the budget.
All right.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Of adjournment?
Aye.
It is unanimous. Thank you very much. We will be in contact next week. If you have any budget questions, please call, Michelle. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you, John. Thank you.